Wednesday, May 19, 2021. Is now the order of the Black Legion. The I-Black Legion to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is McGraw. We have, I'm sorry. Tori Darnigan.
President.
Tina Price Jeans. Janice King.
President.
Nicole Bible. Katherine Calzola.
Here.
Stephanie Mason.
Here.
Sandra Gill.
Here.
Ezra Lowe.
Here.
And Loretta Stewart.
Yeah.
This evening, we do have Joe West here this evening from the Black Action Network Committee of Beaver County. He is here to present a student recognition of students who were. Joe West, this time.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for inviting me here. Again, my name is Joe West. I'm the president of the Black Action Network Committee of Beaver County, established about a year ago because of all the things that was going on with the George Floyd case and everything else. And we decided to form this organization to amplify our community and to bring about change. As you know, February 20th, there was a Black History Month event that we held Facebook Live, and we had the young children speak about the past incidents and about the incident that occurred in January, and they all did outstanding jobs. Such outstanding job that the board voted to give each one of them a plaque for their participation. And I'm here today to present that plaque to the young Ariel Gordon, if she's present. On behalf of the Board of the Black Action Network of Beaver County, I'd present this plaque to you for your participating in the February 20th Black History Month celebration. Thank you, and thank you for participation.
Recommendation to approve the minutes of April 14th and 21st, 2021. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Alacquippa Board of Directors welcome residents of the school district and community who are attending the meeting this evening. We also gladly invite your comments and questions. At this time, local residents who would like to address the board will be invited to approach the podium. You will be asked to state your name and address, and you may speak for up to three minutes. This public participation session is normally limited to about 30 minutes. Prior to adjournment at the end of the meeting, residents will be offered another opportunity to pose questions on items that pertain to the school district. These comments will likewise be limited to three minutes. The board may respond immediately to general questions or comments if appropriate, but will often instruct the superintendent, the business administrator, or the solicitor to defer the research or report back to the board for the resident. If you have specific questions, the board will try its best to respond either at the meeting or shortly thereafter. The board wants to ensure that it is fully informed before responding, so if your questions are not addressed immediately, this does not indicate a lack of interest on the board's part. Finally, to protect the right to privacy, the board cannot respond to complaints or comments about specific individuals, employees, or students in a public session. Once again, at this time, local residents who would like to address the board will be invited to approach the podium.
Good evening. My name is Susan Cable, 1001 Main Street, Alacquippa, PA 15001. I have something that I'd like to present to the board. It's a screenshot. I took out the names of the individuals, both the teacher and the student. If I can give the board a copy? Yes, no?
I don't know what it is.
It's a problem. I blacked out the students' names and the teacher. Can you just let me give them a copy? I'll just say what I have to say.
My question is, has there been discussion with the teachers and the principal yet?
Oh, the principal, yes.
Okay. This is the first time I've seen this, and after the principal, next step is.
For sure, but I just wanted to bring the principal in. Let me just go back here.
Okay, so I gave you a screenshot of a conversation between a student and a teacher, and to protect the privacy of both the parties, I blacked out the names. The student brought this to his mom's attention, and then she brought it to me, and I'm closed with the family, and I'm trying to help this mom and student out.
Madam President, I would say that this is something that involves a particular student, even though unnamed, or any particular teacher, unnamed, coming forth at this time and dropping it on the school board, I don't think is appropriate. Somebody should make an appointment with Dr. Carbone and attempt to understand and address the matter.
Okay, is that what you want? Is that what you want done?
President?
Yes. I'm sorry?
I'm understanding. We still can't, you know, look at it and ourselves as a school.
But we don't know what it is.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Why can't we look at it?
And that's fine. That's fine. I did email. I did email Ms. Alexander. She said it would be addressed, but it is appalling conversation between a student and a teacher, so I'll leave it at that, and Dr. Carbone, I'll email you. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Elaine Verostek. I'm a teacher at the elementary school, and I'm here on behalf of other teachers who are looking to retire this year.
Mrs. Verostek, I hate to interrupt you. Could you please give her your name and address? Your address?
Yes. My address is 1296 Airport Road in Alacquippa. Is that it? Just the address? Okay. So there are five of us that will be retiring this year. There are more that would have liked to have seen a package come, and I had a conversation with Dr. Carbone at the beep and greet night, and if we could find eight to 10 people, he would consider proposing the package. Between the five of us that are retiring this year, we have over 130 years in this school district. Now, I would like the board to consider a package. There are definitely five of us. There were more that were interested, but never heard back from that. So it's our desire that the board at some point discuss that and let us know what your feelings are, after I myself have been here 30 years, and my colleagues behind me have also been here 30 years, which is something that we would like the board to consider. Thank you.
Did there be a discussion on that? Say it again. Why? Because we... But we never heard nothing about this.
Yes, it was.
And how'd you determine that?
Of course.
I know all these teachers, man. We losing some great, good teachers, and there should be something done immediately. We can't keep putting stuff off. Say it again.
Why not?
Well, we'll discuss that. We'll talk about that. We gotta have more than that to work with. That it's not beneficial.
It was never brought to the board, so how can you say it's not beneficial? Can we discuss it after the meeting?
We'll get it. We gonna get it.
Well, she don't need to come to the meeting saying that, you know, the board did not because this is the first time we heard about it. A package deal for the teachers discussed.
But I guess the situation is, although we have these committee meetings, and, you know, the committee meetings aren't always adhered to, and everyone does not get any minutes or anything, and that's what's going on. So that's why the board really does not know, and we do apologize about what is really going on, because we don't know, because there are different committees, and they did discuss it in the financial committee, that's what they're saying. But we don't have any knowledge of what exactly was discussed in that financial committee. So we apologize, we don't know.
Can I ask a question? Okay, you're saying that you don't know, and I understand that. So when it was brought up to Dr. Carbone, whoever was in the initial meetings, why was that information not presented to the board?
You have to talk to Dr. Carbone. Once again, we don't know.
Because we're not all on the same committee.
Oh, so you're saying that as far as a package is concerned, you might not be on that.
I'm not on the budget, no matter what.
So you don't need to know anything about that.
Right, no matter what, budget, financial, I'm not on that.
It doesn't matter.
So only the people who are involved in the financial aspect of it really need to know what's going on. Nobody else.
But they can't make no decision about everybody's job.
No, we all should know what's going on.
No, that's not, yeah, that's not necessarily.
We should know what's going on, what committee you're on.
Right, you should.
Whoever the chair of that committee is should report back to the rest of the board what was discussed in their committee meetings. We were never notified.
And we wasn't either. I sit on that committee.
You're the chair?
Yes. We never discussed a package deal for teachers that want to go out for this school year. We did years ago. We had 80. I asked the question last week because it was...
Yeah, that's what...
That's the first time I heard it. You know, why wasn't there a package deal? So just so we're clear, it was definitely brought up. So to say that it was discussed, that's a play on words, but it was definitely brought up, okay? It was. It was brought up. Did we discuss it? Did we have? It was brought up.
Okay, well, they brought it up.
When's the next budget meeting?
Second Monday in June, whatever that is.
So that gives time before July 1st that you guys can discuss this?
Yes. Yes.
Any more questions? All right. Tax parcel purchases. Recommendation to approve the minutes of April 14th and 21st, 2021 for the... Any questions on the motion?
Aye.
All in favor? All right. Tax parcel purchases. Recommendation to approve the following tax parcel purchases as listed on the agenda.
I'll move. Second.
Tori, Dan.
Any questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Solicitor? Recommendation to approve Mr. John F. Sattipack Esquire as the solicitor for Alacquippa School District effective July 1, 2021 through and including June 30, 2022. All costs remain the same.
I'll move. I'll second.
Any questions on the motion?
Yes, my question is if we can have some training or whatever as far as legal issues, as far as like discussion of legal issues, because everything else we've been, everything else we have to hear about it, about rumors, and so some of the teachers, about rumors. So I feel that, like, she presented that, you know, maybe that's, it's sitting on bylaws that we couldn't read the letter, or policies that we couldn't see what's going on, because if she gave it to the principal, it should have been, y'all in the same building, correct? It should have been given to you, or you should have been, you should have known about it. Now, I'm just asking a question. Is that, is there some training we can get that we can understand what we can hear and what we cannot hear?
Recommendation was to follow chain of command. They went to the principal. If they weren't satisfied, they go to the superintendent next, then they come to the board. That's why you said that we would...
So the principal don't, that's why I'm asking the question. The principal don't present it to the superintendent?
If they're not satisfied with the principal's decision, they have the right to escalate it to the superintendent.
But still, it's like calling tomato a tomato. If the principal knew, and it dealing with our students and a teacher, that should have automatically went to him. Instead of us hearing about it, like we always do.
What they're saying is they don't follow chain of command. They have to go to people before they come to the board.
My thing is like this, it's a child, it's a student. It shouldn't, yeah, it's timeframe for everything. We don't let, everything else that we vote on, it always was months later that we find out. It's things we need to find out as it happens, so we can address it then.
And Ms. Gill, I understand that, and I respect that. We're gonna stick to this agenda, and right now, we're gonna have to arrest Mr. Sattipack. So are we doing a whole in favor or is it a roll call? All right, we'll do a roll call. Ms. Gill?
No.
Mrs. Bible?
Yes.
Mrs. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Price Jeans?
Yes.
Mrs. Calzola?
Yes.
Mrs. King?
No.
Mrs. Darnigan?
No.
Mr. Lowe?
No.
And Mrs. Stewart?
No.
PSBA All Access Package. Recommendation to approve the PSBA All Access Package for the 2021 through 2022 school year. At $6,280.24, this cost being the same as last year.
I'll move.
Second.
Any questions on the motion?
Yes, I think that we should table this because we have this package deal at $6,280.44, and when we went to look at everything, half the board don't even access this package deal, and we need to either, obviously, we need to look at it and cut some costs or something, because we're paying $6,000, and other schools is paying $4,000, $5,000, so we need to see what actually we're paying for, and we need to utilize these classes and these trainings and stuff that they're offering to us, and if we're not going to use this, why do we continue to pay for it? There's only a handful of us, handful of us, that even go on here and look up stuff and whatever. So I would say, I'd like to make a recommendation, we table this until we get further information on what actually we're going to use, what's going to be beneficial to our board, because this $6,000, we're paying all this money every year, and half of us is not even accessing it.
Do you make your motion to table?
Yes.
There was a, a main and a second, anyway?
Who's second? My second. Yeah, she's second.
The main motion was a motion and a second, correct?
Yes.
Now, there's a motion and table and a second?
Yes.
Okay. So you're gonna vote on the motion and table?
Yes. Yes.
Mrs. Bible?
Yes.
This is a motion to table?
Yes.
Mrs. Mason?
No.
Mrs. Price Jeans?
No.
Mrs. Calzola?
No.
Mrs. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Darnigan?
Absolutely. Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Gill?
Yes.
Mr. Lowe?
Yes.
Beaver County Medical Health Association. Recommendation to approve an agreement between the Alacquippa School District and the Mental Health Association in Beaver County.
A second.
Any questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Presley Bridge. Presley Bridge. Recommendation to approve an agreement between the Alacquippa School District and Presley Bridge.
A second.
Any questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the recommendation to approve medical rescue services for the 2021, 2022 school year at a rate of $3,400 effective July 1, 2021 through and including June 30, 2022.
I'll motion.
Gill?
I'll second.
Any questions on the motion?
Do they actually have like an ambulance here at the table?
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay. Finance. Recommendation to approve the financial reports for April 2021. Treasury Report, Report of Taxes Collected, Report of Delinquent Property Tax Collections, General Fund Financial Statements, and Cafeteria Fund Financial Statements.
I'll move.
Second.
Any questions on the motion?
I find it, yeah, I find it hard to deal with this when we don't have the financial manager here, because I asked some questions the last time I was supposed to get some information about it. In my package.
Is that what you were questioning?
Yeah, yeah, well, I'm wondering where she's at anyway, just to approve her work. This is her work we trying to approve, and she's not here. Anybody know, anybody know where she at? I'm motion we table it.
Second. She's second.
I have a question for the plan. So we gonna table everything that's concerning her, because then there's disbursements, which means that's things that need to be paid, correct?
That's correct.
So what does that do?
Where's the disbursements at?
Next.
Over there.
You just got a question for other.
Yeah, but this here, right here.
But that's the information that was sent home to us.
So are you okay with the disbursements that we have here?
On here, right here?
Yeah. This is what we're approving, right, disbursements?
Or is it that you just don't have time to look at it to see exactly what's going on? Is that what's going on? You need time.
Yeah, because that's a lot of reading.
So he needs time.
And the way it's presented to us, the pages are, and back of the next page upside down, you know, I'm 68 years old, and I got a sight problem, so, you know, I need clarity on what I'm reading. Now, certainly, we're not gonna stop them from being paid, but we can, we can ratify that, and then we have to pay for the rest of it, because I'm tired of this stuff.
Okay, so the other that you wanted, we have that. Are we okay to approve the disbursements?
Can, I'm all right with that.
Okay, this is what we're gonna do. Yeah.
I'm, was I already moving?
I'm confused. We're table...
Can I move again to table? Wait, what are we doing?
Well, we would have the table because what he want is the other. These are the disbursements that we already talked about that we have to...
Yeah, but we're voting on the financial reports.
Right.
That he wants to table. So he made a motion to table.
Right here, right here, this portion right here, this is another portion.
He made a motion to table, you seconded it, so now we're voting on the motion to table, right?
No, I didn't second.
Somebody seconded it. Tori, I think seconded it.
So is that other included in our financial report?
It's not in here. It was in that preliminary budget.
Right, the one that came to the, yeah, I'm not asking, is that other?
Right.
Two others on there. Are they included in our financial report?
If you look up...
Because if so, if they included in this financial report, then by all means, we need to table, because like I said, other, at that amount, for both those others, and we can't know, I mean, like, we need to know what money is being dispersed out.
Monty, was that on the preliminary budget, or was that on the...
That's when we...
The other that you were questioning. Was that on the preliminary budget? It was on the financial reports?
But the requested information that they're asking about from last week was all in the package that we received on Friday.
And we asked the questions?
I guess the question...
We asked the questions.
Everything that you guys asked for, she sent to you on Friday.
Well, I guess the situation, she's not here to answer any type of question.
Because she's on vacation.
Well, I understand that, but if she's not here to answer it, so who's here to really answer the questions definitively, what is really going on? That's all. We don't have to argue or anything. If it needs to be table, it needs to be table. You said it's okay to disperse the payments.
This version is another motion altogether.
Okay, can we vote on the motion to table?
We're not talking, we're talking about...
That's not what he's saying, Nicole. I think we just calm down.
I understand, but let's vote on this first, and then we can...
No, I think Mr. Lowe needs to explain what he wants to do, and then, because we can't think for him. So, excuse me, Ms. Lowe, can you please explain exactly?
I'm making a motion that we table this recommended action right here that we're on right now. The Treasury Report, Report of Taxes Collected, Report of Delinquent Property Taxes, the General Fund Financial Statement, and Cafeteria Financial Statement. That's this motion.
Right.
That's for this part. This here down here, this verb is another category altogether.
Okay.
So I'm trying to make it like Dr. Teachers from getting paid, because that's far from it.
That's my confusion, because she's saying there's two others. I'm thinking you're saying there's disbursements too, that's why I said.
No, they called other.
I explained it.
On the financial report.
Can we do it now?
So we're gonna vote on level nothing other.
We're gonna vote on the general fund payments that we have here, and we're gonna vote on the cafeteria fund payments we have here for the $49,680.26.
We have to make a motion on...
Your motion to table number one.
Well, they have the motion, they have the vote.
The reports.
Can we word it the right way, so they know what we're doing?
Okay, so we got the report.
They want to table the reports, Tim.
What you just read, the very first one, that's the only one he wants to table.
Okay. The motion has already been made. Can we just vote if we're gonna need to table it or not? The motion has already been made. Somebody first, somebody second, now it's just now who's gonna vote, if you gonna table it or not. That's it.
Mrs. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Price Jeans?
No.
Ms. Calhoun?
No.
Mrs. Kane?
No.
Mr. Flanagan?
Yes.
Ms. Gill?
Yes.
Mrs. Bible?
No.
Mr. Low?
Yes.
Mrs. Stewart?
Yes.
So we're gonna go number two, disbursements. Okay, here we go. Motion to approve the general fund disbursements in the amount of $419,524.06 for May 2021. The general fund ratifications in the amount of $720,207.97 for April 2021. Cafeteria fund disbursements in the amount of $49,688.26 for May 2021.
I move.
Second.
Any questions on the motion?
Mrs. Price, Mrs. Price Jeans?
Yes.
Ms. Calhoun?
Yes.
Mrs. Kane?
Yes.
Mrs. Darren Flanagan?
No.
I didn't hear you.
No.
Ms. Gill?
Yes.
Mrs. Bible?
Yes.
Mrs. Mason?
Yes.
Ms. Low?
Yes.
And Mrs. Stewart?
Yes. Yeah. Okay, number three. The Nutrition Group, Inc., recommendation to approve the ca- Oh, a one-year contract extension with the Nutrition Group effective July 1, 2021, through and including June 30, 2022.
I move. I'll second. Who moved up here?
Tina.
Me.
Nicole, what'd you say?
I did.
Catherine.
What was the motion?
So is this the one where there're gonna be an increase in the, the meal plan?
That's the next one.
That's the next one, okay.
Okay, number four.
We have to vote. We have to vote.
What we got? Here we go? Oh, sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I have to abstain.
Nicole abstained, okay. Can I ask, can I ask Nicole a question? About nutrition? Yeah. Oh, no, we voted. What's that?
You can ask on the next one.
Oh, yeah. Cafeteria, number four. Nevermind, it's there. Cafeteria prices, recommendation to approve the adult cafeteria price for the 2021-2022 school year. Breakfast at $2.25 and lunch at $4. The lunch cost is a 25 cent increase.
I move. Second.
Any questions on the motion?
Yes. If we're gonna label these lunches as adult and students, proportions should be as such. Adult and students. Because there's no reason for no one, an adult, to pay $4 for what students are getting. It, it should be not, no price difference because of the simple fact that they're paying more than they should get enough for that's suitable for an adult. So should we raise it? If we're not gonna do anything better? Should we raise it? So what do they recommend about the portions? Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So with this P.
They have to have some type of guidelines.
Guidelines and portions.
Just to do.
Yeah.
What are the guidelines as far as portions? My suggestion, if you have questions, honestly, because I don't want to answer it wrong, would to be to call Tanya. So this need to be tabled, once again, because there's a question as far as the portion.
No.
Well, the prices don't change, but that's what I was gonna say. Is this something that can be discussed with Tanya? That there are concerns about the portion size? Because I don't, the state kinda tells us what to do with the prices, but that-
Right.
It's up to them to talk to the management on.
Now, is that appropriate even though we are already voting on this?
It's not gonna change the prices. The price has to go by what the state's telling them.
And that's what we're saying. So is there something about, is there something different?
That's something they have to discuss with the management. Because-
Oh, we asked that question last week. Definitely, we're curious if she get an answer.
Oh, yeah, because what's her name?
They used to come to our meetings, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
We're supposed to find that out.
So what are we gonna do with this?
All in favor?
Aye.
Not on the-
Opposed?
Can you add a stipulation on it?
Yeah, I needed to ask. John, am I supposed to abstain from that, too?
No, no, not the pricing. Because that, that money doesn't go to nutrition. That goes to school, right?
The issue is not the money, it's the portions they take.
Okay. Number five. Harley Consulting. Recommendation to approve the agreement of Harley Consulting for the post-retirement medical valuation under GASB 75 for years ending June 30, 2021 and June 30, 2022. Cost is $4,200.
I move. Second.
Any questions on the motion?
So is this part of the retirement? Is it, is it-
What we done?
But this is automatic. This would be automatic. We move, and then this would be automatic.
Yeah.
Any other questions on the motion?
Ms. Calhoun?
Yes, sorry.
Mrs. Kane?
Yes.
Mrs. Darren Flanagan?
Yes.
Ms. Gill?
Yes.
Mrs. Bible?
Yes.
Mrs. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Price Jeans?
Yes.
Mr. Low?
Yes.
And Mrs. Stewart?
Education and Technology School?
Yes, summer school. Recommendation to approve summer, summer school sessions for the elementary school June 14 through July 9, 2021, July 12 through August 5, 2021, and August 9 through the 20th, 2021, 9:00 AM to 12:30 PM, and at the JSHS June 14 through July 9, 2021, 8:15 AM through 12:00 PM. All costs will be covered by ESRS funding. Date subject to change based upon student enrollment.
I move.
Any questions on the motion?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes. So did we figure out what's gonna happen with grades over four and five? Were the four, five, and six? Four, five, and six. Are they gonna have summer school as well? Or do we not have staff to do that?
Uh, we're still working through this. We're still collecting.
Did you second that? Did you second? So by the end of this, you'll know if they're about summer school.
Uh, my question is, um, are we gonna, with the low grades of the students, some, a lot of students we have, are we gonna be able to do this safely? Or, you know, limit the classroom? Or do we have the teachers for this? Because from my understanding that the grades are some, a lot of, a lot of the kids, they're basically probably gonna be needing summer school.
We'll do this as safely as we can.
That'd, that'd be a question that the parents probably would ask. So I'm just asking that question.
So my concern is that this looks very good on paper. The ability to, to create this level of instructional time, I have a concern with it. I'm not looking at you.
I, I, I can respond. I might have had some. I don't know what you're asking.
And so I, I'm thinking, if this is a K, who's rescheduled? Is that what you gave us?
Yes.
And so, um, in my experience, let me just say that, from 9 to 9:15, to be ready to go and do some actual instruction when you're just arriving at 9 o'clock, to be ready to go at 9:15 with grades K. I, I, that, I, I don't see that. In addition to that, the last conversation we had, I asked you about instructional time. You said that you would commit three hours of instruction. And so when I take a look at this, I see a half an hour instruction for math, a half an hour for math and reading, a half an hour for reading. So I'm, I'm just trying to get an understanding. Those talk, those really quick spurts of instructional time when we're gonna be doing this. How long does it typically take you to do this Hagerby, um, diagnostic?
The Hagerby program is meant to be taught in 10 to 16 minutes. We have that built in, so two times a day. And we built it in for 15 minutes, two times a day. This, all, this whole entire schedule was planned with K to two teachers. We did not have a third grade representative because none of the third grade teachers signed up for summer school. Also president was the diet counselor and the speech and language therapist. So we prepared this together Monday and summer day on Friday. So that's, that's an appropriate schedule for kids at that age group. And it does fill up the time with what I presented last week, with the questions we're asked. It's reflective of that. The only thing that we added to that schedule is a social and emotional learning piece, social and emotional learning piece, which will rotate. But I had to put it in a lot because at some point, people all get that. The teacher felt it was extremely necessary because the lack of the children in school did show up with some of the students and some of their interactions. So that's, the teacher felt that very important. That's why we built that in there. And it, and it does impact how well kids will respond after that. So we felt that it was necessary to have that. What happened behind that, the diet counselor was part of our program. So we wanna make sure that we're hitting all aspects of what we need with that order for the students and kids.
So still, I think this is just for K to three. There's still nothing, no format for four, five, and six? Like, do you have something hypothetically for four, five, and six? Like, I, I just don't understand. Like, are we gonna have anything that we can see? Like, everything is like K to three. And then, you know, when we ask, what about the other grades? It's like, well, if we have the teachers, you know, to, you know, teach.
That's what I'm saying.
Like, we have nothing. And we ask every meeting, and it's, it's nothing. So what are we gonna do with those students?
The, the number of students that are eligible in K to three, we have enough teachers to service those students and keep the number small. Ms. Shepherd had presented last week that we did not have teachers in the upper grade levels other than high school teachers who may be teaching for the high school at that point. We did not have upper grade level teachers at that point sign up. The focus when we planned was definitely to start with K to three because we have always said they will feel the greatest impact from not being in school for the months that they were out. So we had to start with that core group of students. That's why we started the initial planning and planned through with K to three. We, I feel that we have enough teachers to work with that group of students. Beyond that, we don't know if we could service all of the other students that would need it. So we can't commit to something and we don't know if we have the staff to do that. So right now, we know that we have the staff for K to three.
So what, 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 what do you have in store? What do you plan? Like, a, a secondary plan for those students?
The backup plan.
Yeah, what, what backup plan do you have, like?
I was only asked by Dr. Carver to assist with elementary summer school K to three.
Oh.
I, that's what I was asked to do, and that's what I helped do. Beyond that, I, I don't know if I can answer those specific questions. I'm- I mean, what are we, so what are we gonna do for the, junior senior high? I mean, I mean, so you say we don't have enough teachers? They have a summer school. Remember, we discussed that last week. Okay, yeah, but, um, do we have enough teachers signed up for? Miss Carver? So you have all the kids now that's gonna be going, we have them labeled already as summer school, and we're gonna have teachers?
Yes, we do. We have just enough. We thought we're gonna have a few more, but some teachers popped it out. We initially gave, we initially did a survey. Um, we just sent it out. We initially gave, we initially did a survey, um, she just sent it out.
Right.
We have four names, but that's a, a few things for, but we do have enough for the number that we have. And the duty is very different, and the students that are credit based, not just tough, they take it for veggie duty, which is a different course. So we will have a place for them to come to the school if they want to do it and not be at home. But, um, we do have enough for our seven to eight folks.
So Dr. Carver, she's saying that you only initially told her to do K through three?
Well, that was our start, yes.
Okay, but it's been brought up several times, including in our committee meeting about four through six. So I get that this is the finalized thing that you guys put together for, for K through three.
Yes.
Where are we at on four through six? Because seven through twelve seems to have a plan in place, K through three has a plan in place. We have kids in three other grades that are being ignored right now.
I think the part that we're missing is if we have the teacher, we, there's nothing we can do for four, five and six. At this time, we can't force people to teach summer school. They, they signed up voluntarily, and as we said before, four, five, six, they're, they're projects. It's not like your normal, uh, elementary classroom, there's a department of four, five and six. So we have a math teacher, we have a social studies teacher, we have a science teacher, and we have an E L A teacher. So it, it would have to focus on that material, it wouldn't be a general, uh, like an elementary school setup. So, excuse me, elementary, like the primary grade setup, and we did not get any of our four, five or six grade teachers to sign up for summer school.
But when I asked the question last week, um, you guys said specifically that you had enough teachers to teach the higher grade, you had more than enough.
No, no. They don't have one for the lower grades.
For the lower grades.
Beth, didn't you mention though that you were going to build something into the day next year for four, five and six? If you could not get the teachers?
In the schedule, in the preliminary schedule that Ms. Shepherd shared with us, there is time in there for interventions. We also have proposed to have, um, I don't know if you have a proper title, but we want to have staff, uh, additional staff, not necessarily for teaching positions, but additional staff to work as intervention specialists, so to speak, with the students. We have, we, that's something that would have to be approved, so we can't fully plan for that. But then we do have, we do want to put extra support in for the students. But, but I, I, I want to make myself very clear, it's not that we don't have any children of fourth, fifth or sixth grader may have, but with the kinds of needs that we're dealing with right now from the pandemic, we have to focus on a kid, especially the K, one kid who are learning how to read and learning their basic foundations of math. It is critical that we reach as many of those students as possible. So we have to put an emphasis on that small elementary kid. Because our kids tend to struggle academically, we expanded that to include second and third grade. Because, you know, because our students struggle, they come in struggling. But I will tell you, I started today with a couple other teachers at the elementary school to test with the diagnostic that I shared, uh, a month ago, back in March, that I did. Um, I can already see just from testing today that when our kids came back from March until May, they are improving, they have improved. That's why it is critical that we reach that group of kids. They, that we have to meet them now, and the summer, we cannot let them just go about being here in the summer. Because when, they're just going to, uh, get that slag that's typical in the summer, and it's going to be a greater impact because they're already, they already have a percentage deficit from not being here for so long.
So Beth, correct me if I'm wrong, so like, out of a hundred and, what is it? And, and help me, because I, I think everyone really needs to know what's going on here. Because I do understand, so just say if I had a child that was in fifth grade, and then I heard you say that, like, I don't care, you're going to meet my child where they are, and they need to go up, because every child was affected by the pandemic. Hold on, so help me, where, the, give me the numbers and the statistics. As far as out of a hundred and twenty schools, hundred and two schools, Alacopa is one oh one. Okay, so that was even before the pandemic. So like, something is going on here, and it's not right, and it needs to be fixed. And I think that, that's why I'm so big on numbers, like, what's going on? What's going on with the curriculum? That's not acceptable, it's embarrassing.
I, I don't disagree with that, I've, I have been part of that for a long time, but I also feel that there are a lot of factors that have played into that for many years that have come up throughout different meetings and stuff. But to talk about what you're asking me now, I can only answer about what's happening right now. And I feel very strongly that we need as many kids in summer school and that four early primary grades as possible. And we can work something out for four, five and six, of course, we would want to do anything with the calculus with fifth and sixth as well. But right now, this is what we know we can do, we can do this. We can, we can, we, we can work with these students, we have the teachers, they're already planned, they are extremely excited about having their kid here and working with them. They were very eager to go through everything that our department forward to you was done collectively as a group with them. They're the ones who know what we've done because they're with them.
What about sixth grade? They're going to be transitioning to seventh. They would, they need that extra educational push, like, all right, like, as if, I don't know if they do it now, but they used to prepare you, like, when you was going from eighth to ninth, they prepared you for the transition. Now, how are these kids getting prepared? And, and also, if their grades are low, so what you're saying, you're just going to fail them? And not add summer school, or add summer school and, or you just going to just pass them through?
I think what she's saying, it has nothing to do with her. Yeah, it doesn't have anything to do with her, she's doing what she was told to do, K through three.
That's what I did.
And then it depends on if they have staffing for the rest of it. The questions that we're asking her, she really can't answer. It's more of a peak question on what we're going to do with four, five and six, and also a staffing question if we have the teachers to do that.
That I recommend, but who is in charge of the curriculum as far as that?
So I have a question, because, um, what's going to pop up, and that's something that we need to look at, is you're going to have an influx of parents that will definitely come in, and they will want to know why and how, and, um, how are you going to assist my child? Um, how is it? And I'm not saying I don't understand, I get everything that everyone is saying on the table. But, you know, you're going to have all of that. And so what are we going to do when we have them parents come in? And they question whatever it is that needs to be questioned, or whatever the case may be, how are we going to assist my child? Because it's not going to just look like, oh, you're not going to have a fourth grader or a, a sixth grader or a fifth grader to say, um, okay, that's beautiful, but I don't care about that K through third. It, it's, it's not, you, you understand what I'm saying? Like, they're concerned about their child. So what are you going to do with the influx of parents? What do you want to do when they come and they talk and they say whatever they have to say? And then it's going to be what the board, we need to discuss some things.
Right.
Because that's what's getting ready to happen.
Right.
And I'm not saying it to Beth, I'm not saying it to a free Beth. I'm not saying it to administration at all. I'm asking what's going to happen when this comes? So if we don't have something to share or say?
Thank you.
Then we need to be able to communicate, and communicate that effectively as to why or how, and what we're going to do to make sure that those kids from four to six will be extremely accommodated when they come back to school to fill in some of those gaps, or whatever the case may be. I'm not saying don't do it, I'm saying you're going to have to figure out how to do that part, because you're going to have an issue.
So are you just going to ask if they need extra help? That's what I'm saying.
No, I want to ask the question, is it, is it, is it allowable for us to advertise for help? I mean, could we recruit, we don't, we might have from our staff, can we recruit some, can we advertise for some?
Not, I, I don't know necessarily for summer school. I mean, we can still talk to the association, but if they don't want to volunteer and we want to go out and recruit, then we could.
So I, just a few questions too. Um, like, I get what you're saying, Beth, with, with the kids with the reading. And, and that's before pandemic, we know three K coming in. If these kids are reading effectively, starting out, it affects them moving forward with everything, not just reading. So I, I completely understand where you're coming from that. I agree with you, the, the kids are doing better since they're in school, because my own children are doing better since they're back in school, okay? Um, my concern is the four through six, and I, and I've continuously brought this to your attention. Um, is there anything that we can do maybe to alternate the kids? Or maybe do part K through three and then do four through six? So that we are bringing those kids in and hitting them? I understand that the staffing is an issue, but if, if we alternate them. But correct me if I'm wrong, that elementary teachers can be moved around, right?
They, they are certified, so most of our teachers are certified K through six, the majority of them.
Okay.
But I think what we need to understand also is that sixth grade math is basically your pre-algebraal.
Okay.
And you have to be able to teach the content. If someone's been teaching first grade, say, for twenty years, they would not, they honestly would not be able to handle that. And that would just simply be just having a body in there.
Okay.
You want someone that's able to actually deliver the material.
So would we have anybody extra up here that you guys, that could at least help with the math portion of the, the younger grades?
At least with six. At least with sixth grade.
Okay.
We, we have one other teacher that I thought I had, will actually work with extended school year. But that leaves him with exactly four, and because we're teaching the three subjects, and the other placement would be for the edgenuity students, I'll have a teacher to stay.
Okay, so here's my other question. All of our administrators have been teachers. Is there any of our administrators that can take a half hour a day to teach these good kids math?
I would not be able to.
It's kind of a critical situation where we know we need to, can our administrators step in and kind of help out with this?
That could be a possibility, but you also have to take into account that we have to use vacation time that we have not used all year, or we're going to lose it by December third. I mean, and I personally, I have twenty five.
I think the K through three, three thing is, is good, but I think that we need to have a well-rounded plan for everybody. And it sounds like you guys have it together, like, up here for what you're doing, but we can't kind of miss those kids in between.
And my question is still, if you don't have those teachers or those classes for four, fifth and sixth, and some of them need to go to summer school, so you're just going to fail them? Or you're going to offer some help?
Yeah, no.
We can't ask, okay, I just want to know, putting it out there.
I mean, you're going to have to do it in kind of a hurry, because there's only three weeks of school left.
Right.
I'm a sixth grade teacher, and we have half of the kids in sixth grade that aren't doing any work. They're doing nothing, they're failing. We have sent home dodos until we're blue in the face. We have done everything possible to try and get these kids to work. I, I, I don't see how you, how summer school is just going to be this magic pill that allows these kids to go to seventh grade, they're not going to break. And you, the fourth, fifth, and sixth. I'm sure one of the reasons why we're not teaching summer school is because we don't have kids doing it in the regular school year. I think there's some accountability somewhere with the kids and the parents. And, and the magic pill of summer school isn't going to work with these kids.
But they need to be offered, not as a magic pill, but as a help for these kids.
I, I understand that, but if you're not going to do it during the school.
And then in school twenty-four seven, we got teachers, should we say, well, the teacher's not teaching them? We can't lay blame like that, we don't understand why, we don't know why they don't know. But we do know that they need extra help with since this pandemic. Because you know what? Their grades wasn't too hot before the pandemic, okay?
Exactly.
So that's what we're saying.
Mrs. Veraztak, the kids.
And they're not doing the work in school.
So what are you doing about that?
That's what I was going to ask you, so the, so the issue that you're still seeing right now with your kiddos, is, is it the kids, is it a mix of both the kids that stay cyber and the kids that are in school? Or is it still the kids that stay cyber?
I have twenty kids, five are home virtual, and the other fifteen are in with me. The fifteen that are in with me, I have six that are not doing anything, and they sit right in front of me.
Okay.
And all day long, they don't turn things in. So, and I'm hovering over them. So I don't know what they're going to.
There's some kids that need summer school. I mean, I'm not saying like, all the kids that don't know, just throw them in summer school because that's not going to help. If there was a, um, fear of flunking, then they would have flunked, they would have flunked. What I'm stating is, what about the kids that all the other grades are great, and all they need is this one class to pass?
So kind, I kind of see both sides of it, and I agree with you. Accountability is something that our parents need to take into, into account, and that's before pandemics. That's nationwide, not just Alacopa. There's a huge issue with parents being accountable, because our home structures have changed a lot, okay? So I do get that, but I also understand what Pumpkin's saying too, is that we have to have something available, even if we offer it, it may not, it may not solve the issues for them kids that, that nobody's being accountable for and pushing. But it may help the kids that need that extra boost, that are going to put the effort in, you know?
But if there's no staff, there's no summer school. And that's what the issue is.
Right.
There's no staff.
And that's why I'm saying maybe we could come up with some different type of creative plan so that we can kind of help those kiddos in between.
The kids that are struggling with that, have they always been sure they're going to be just starting? Because out of all, obviously, what other parent would she be able to help those that are struggling this hard?
Of course, they've been online with me all year. They're online with me, they turn things in white. And that sends to the parents that my kids turned in their work. But what the parents don't understand is all the kids do is they turn in my work that I sent, not finished. So the parents aren't aware until we do it alone, and really, nothing has changed all year. For the amount of times that we do jobs, we work with these kids, we, we still have kids turning in white work.
I, I'm just asking a question, because I know kids are, so I, I just want to get it.
Right.
Because when you're sitting there, so since you said that those kids right in front of you aren't getting it, they haven't got it all year, so if you better sit for the rest of the year, but they still don't get it, or is there another plan, or is there any, the struggle for a living?
I'm right there for them, I think any of the teachers are right there in front of them. If they choose not to, what's the matter with these computers?
I don't think she's, I think she's asking what creativity, what are you doing to be creative? To get them, and I understand sometimes they're just like an out of space somewhere. But what are you doing as a professional to be creative, to say, hey, you know what, I'm losing this kid, let me see if I can bring him back, you know what I mean? That's what I think the, the situation is. What creativity, what are you doing? Because the score is one oh two out of, one oh one or one oh two, that is bad. And it's not just the pandemic, it's been a long time. And you guys are getting paid, so something is going on, there's no balance here.
So let me just say this, Ms. Veraztak, you know, my son's one of your students. All year, he struggled, and that was his own doing. He's gotten much better since he's in front of him. The kiddos that are still struggling that are sitting in front of you, do we have any interventions or anything in place to help assist you guys with those kids that are struggling?
At some point, there's an accountability issue on a sixth grader to be able to say, I'm going to, it's an internal thing, I've got to internalize that my education is important to me. So I can sit there and I can work with the kids and help them with whatever they want. We read everything together in my class, because we have learning disabled students throughout the sixth grade. There is not one thing that is not read to those kids, because I have to be accountable to the special end department. So I can only work with them so much before they can even become independent, because they're going to treat their high.
Right.
So I can teach everything that I need to teach, I can move around, I can walk around the classroom without my mask on, trying to help them, but until they internalize that education is important, I can't bring that to them.
So let me, let me ask you something, like, these, these kids that are still struggling like that, even though. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So the kids that are struggling like that, even if you're trying to do everything you can to kind of pull them in, but keep up with your classroom, at any point, do we make a referral that maybe they need to have a pullout session? Or maybe we need to refer them for an I E P? You guys don't refer, make referrals to say maybe this kiddo needs an I E P?
But it, but ultimately, they can't, they, they cannot say that child needs to be, that's illegal. For them to say that, that the district can become liable, because that came out of a teacher's mouth.
So my recommendation, um, I'm sure that there's been like a lot of conversation, and we've shared a lot, a lot of concerns, um, a, a lot, right? So maybe at some point, we can schedule some time to sit down at, at the table and maybe discuss and come up with some ideas, I don't know what that looks like. Um, but, you know, um, we won't come to a solution tonight. And I think, you know, at this point, are we able to vote for this? Summer school, um, do we have everything in place?
Nope.
Is there, um, you know, I just know that you're going to have questions with kids, um, parents, and whether parents are accountable or not, they're still going to come, and they're going to say, why wasn't my child not offered this same opportunity? And, um, we owe that to them. Um, I believe that, I believe we owe them to say something.
Right.
So, um, I don't know if we're going to vote on this tonight, or whatever the case may be, but if we come next month, you're already into a session, so, uh, them starting. So I don't know how well that's going to work either. So how do we move forward from here?
No, that's not how it works.
Wait, can I?
That's not how it works, you don't just come up with this and then come up with a plan later. Like, that's not how it works.
There's not even a cost to it either, you know the cost of being. With K through three?
So if we vote on it, do, are we still including four, fifth and sixth? Should we get teachers, or no?
No, we're not, it's just K one.
If you would vote against K through three, what they're saying is to come back and, and discuss it further.
But you gave them direction just for K to three?
Yeah, I say that too.
Let, let's vote on this and, and let them, let them have discussion with them about the fourth, fifth and sixth grade. But we, we need, we really need to vote on this.
Vote on this so that these kids can go?
Yeah.
So that they could get the kids registered and three registered and, but there, there has to be something, something for four, five and six.
This is open, this is open, this is not enough.
It doesn't have the grades on it, he said that, so.
It doesn't have the grades.
Just votes that we have summer, so we want no session.
It's my country.
It's not concrete. You guys except outside of the, for the summer?
Was it second? No, I think.
We already made a motion.
All right, let's, let's vote.
I got Colala in love.
Wait, it was Bonnie that seconded, right? Or I, I don't know. I thought it was me and Bonnie.
It was, it was.
Oh, yeah, that was a long time ago. I asked you that.
Mrs. Kane?
No.
Mrs. Durham Vanagan?
I'm Kamala. What, what, what do I do? For the extended school? No.
No, summer school.
Summer school.
What they just discussed.
No.
Actually, this is all.
That's what I asked.
That's what I asked.
Have summer school? Oh, yeah, have summer school.
Ladies, what are we doing? What are we doing?
We're voting on the summer school.
Yeah, they should have summer school.
Well, we're voting from K to three.
No, they're not saying. They're just approving summer school.
That's what I asked.
Yeah.
Ladies, so can we just take the vote?
Yes.
Mrs. Durham Vanagan?
Until we understand it, no.
Yes. No, no.
You're saying yes now?
Yes.
It's Gil?
Yes.
Mrs. Bible?
Yes.
Mrs. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Price Jean?
Yes.
Mrs. Cala Lala?
Yes.
Mrs. Delo?
Yes.
And Mrs. Stor?
Recommendation to approve extended school year services Monday, June fourteenth through Friday, July ninth, 2021, nine AM through one PM.
I'm here.
A second.
Any questions on the motion?
No.
What? This for all students, is that my?
All in favor?
Aye. Is this for all students or is that? This for all students? All students?
Recommendation to approve the participation in the following BBIU consortium partnerships for the 2021 through the 2022 school year. Discovery Education, a dollar forty-nine per student. Overdrive, one thousand five hundred twelve dollars. Technology pool, three hundred and twenty-nine dollars. And New Zealand, that's right? Okay. Price to be determined.
I move.
I'll second.
Any questions on the motion?
No. No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Postseason basketball salaries for the 2021 year. Uh, postseason salaries adjustment and payment to the following basketball coaches. Nick Lackavich. Myriam Smith, you want the price to run them out too? Wyatt Nathan and Bashaun Patrick.
I'll move. A second.
Any questions on the motion? Mrs. Durham Vanagan?
Yes.
It's Gil?
Yes.
Mrs. Bible?
Yes.
Mrs. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Price Jean?
Yes.
Mrs. Cala Lala?
Yes.
Mrs. Kane?
Yes.
Mrs. Delo?
Yes.
And Mrs. Stor?
Yes.
Student athletic insurance. The student athlete accident insurance with Blackwell Financial Planning. Policy runs July one, 2021, through and including June thirtieth, 2022. Cost is four thousand four hundred fifty dollars, which is the same as last year.
I'll second.
Questions on the motion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye. Sorry. Recommendation to appoint Delcie McBride as board secretary for the term beginning July one, 2021, and ending June thirtieth, 2025, at an annual stipend of eighteen hundred. I'll move.
I'll second.
Any questions on the motion?
Any deal?
We doing nothing.
Um, yes.
Mrs. Bible?
Yes.
Mrs. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Price Jean?
Yes.
Mrs. Cala Lala?
Yes.
Mrs. Kane?
Yes.
Mrs. Durham Vanagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Delo?
Now, is this to renew or what?
The four-year term is set for.
It has a four-year term. I get to try to read that.
Who's ready?
It's, he just said it's in the school code.
Well, I'm going to say no.
Recommendation to approve the following resignations for retirement purposes. Patricia Cobb, elementary school professional employee, effective June twelfth. Janice Crump, junior senior high school professional employee, effective June twelfth, 2021. Nora Lemon, district support staff employee, effective July one, 2021. Elaine Vrostek, elementary school professional employee, effective June twelfth, 2021. Tracy White, elementary school professional employee, effective June twelfth, 2021.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Any questions on the motion?
Um, yeah, is it possible that, um, that we can table this until we talk to them about the retirement package that we didn't know anything about? Let's see if that's an option or not?
It doesn't impact that. What they're discussing is how we generally will offer.
What'd you say?
They, they were discussing how we sometimes offer an early retirement to some staff members. So it doesn't impact their retirement. This is for other teachers that may be interested.
No, they want a retirement package.
Yeah, they want a.
But, but they still want to retire.
Yes.
So you must.
I'm confused by that because she was talking about other people that.
Right. Right. There were going to be other, if a package was being offered, there were probably going to be other people that were going to retire.
What are they talking about, a package?
We did that a couple.
We did that when we first voted on the board.
Yeah. Three years.
That's what I said. I thought they still had the package.
I thought those were like the early retirements that.
That's not new either. That, that's been done before.
Yeah, I'm confused.
Yeah, it's done.
By that, because that's not how I, I misunderstood what she was saying.
They may still want to retire, but some of them are forced to retire. No, they're not.
No, well, we can discuss all of it.
That's, that's what I'm saying. We need to discuss because the whole lot that is going on right now, we don't know about.
Yeah, but right now, we need to vote this.
We should have all together.
They're going to retire anyway, but that's still, in the meantime, we can discuss whether we're going to offer them a package or not.
Okay, so she's feeling somebody's being forced. So if they decided to with, if they decided to withdraw, would that? June twelfth. They have till June twelfth to decide. But if we don't approve this now. No, only Nora does.
I don't know. I just feel that some of these would not, not all of them would not retire now because if we, if somebody, administration, would talk to them to find out what's actually going on. Because there's a lot of talk and a lot of chatter going on, and it's always administration, administration, administration. And a couple of them has come to you and have expressed a concern, and there's even people that are returned that hasn't even had a, um, interview. Today.
Can I just say one thing?
What about the evaluation? Has all these people had evaluations? Are you made aware that there's some that have never had an evaluation, have never sat down? I mean, there's a whole lot is going on, and. You sit down, you tell them what their weakness, what their strength. It doesn't matter. They have not had an interview. I mean, haven't had a evaluation. But this is on agenda for last week. And you emailed them today.
Yes.
Why? Well, I just think before we, um, you know, accept this and.
There's no requirement of an interview at all, whatever your program calls for.
What are, what is that?
Because they're going to retire.
But you don't care why they're going to retire? I mean, that's not a concern. We're looking at good people in the school district. You know, she says she's been here for thirty-seven years, and amongst the one, two, three, four, five of them, they have over a hundred years here. That don't speak volumes for our school district. I just think this, this is something that's going on that, um, you know, that need to be looked into. Because I know half of them would not be leaving if things were different. And if they had an evaluation, somebody would already known about this. That's all I'm saying, so.
So I don't mean to piggyback on this, so let me ask you a question. So are you saying that the time that they have been here under Dr. Carbone's supervision, you're saying that they have not had an evaluation, where they have been sat down and said, hey, this is done. You've done A, B, C, D, and E. That's what you're saying? They have not been sat down and discussed?
That is correct. I'm not saying all of them.
Can we discuss this in an executive session?
Well, that's what I'm, that's what I'm saying. We just need to talk about it, but y'all want to vote on it. But know what you're voting on when you vote. You know, do your homework, make sure you know what's going on. Nobody cares that these strong teachers that's been in the schools for years are leaving, and they're not even ready to retire, but they're forced to retire. That's all I'm saying. I've been here since nineteen eighty-five. I know these teachers. I've seen these teachers. I'm just saying, let's look out and see what's going on and why they're leaving before they return. That's all I'm saying. If it matters to you, okay? If it's not, then.
I don't think it would hurt to see like what is really going on.
So when's the next deliberation meeting? When's the first meeting in June? So can we maybe do this then? Is that what you're saying? You want to, you want to table this until the first meeting in June?
That would work to give us time to see what's going on.
I just want to say, I agree with Janice. These are all really, really, really good teachers.
Yes.
Really good. My kids have had most of them.
Nineteen.
And Nora's been here a very, very long time, and I wish they wouldn't have left.
Oh.
Because I just wanted to say, you know, I appreciate them, and I think they're wonderful teachers.
We should have had some.
They, they felt like they, they, one of them said, okay, the teacher bashing has started.
And that's exactly why I said that.
The what?
That's exactly why I said that. I think they're wonderful teachers. I think we have wonderful staff in this school, and I think they do everything they can for these kids.
That, so, but what's the fair comment?
What did she, I didn't hear what she said.
We don't talk to them.
That the teacher bashing has started, and that's why they left.
We don't know.
I went to the, I'm trying to follow progress schools.
Thank you. Thank you.
But I would just like to applaud those teachers because they're wonderful.
Yes, yes.
And, and Nora. They left. They all left.
Uh, Mrs., Miss, uh, Miss Shepherd?
We bashing, we have some questions.
So do you want to motion?
Are, are we motioning the table?
Do you want to motion to table, Janice?
Yes. I'll make a motion that we table this until, before the voters. A second. Okay, we'll say to June ninth.
Any questions on the motion?
I got one. Wait, she, oh.
Nobody's seconded.
She did.
I did.
Oh, I didn't hear you, Tori. I'm sorry.
So what does this do for them at this point? It doesn't affect them at all?
This, the motion is not going to affect them, is it?
No.
They still retired?
No, no.
Well, they're saying that.
No, I'm, I'm saying if they're, if, so, okay, table it.
What they're saying is table it, have the discussion with these teachers because if they want to rescind their request for retirement, they have until that day on it. So if we have a meeting to find out what is going on, and we can talk to these teachers, then it gives them a chance if they want to choose to rescind their retirement.
And I understand that, but what's going to happen between that meeting and the twelfth that's going to change how they feel from before?
They may still want to retire. At least we got the information that we.
They're still going to retire.
They can still do that.
Well, I thought that we were tabling this, so Dr. Carbone, help me if I'm wrong. You're going to talk to them and see exactly what is going on. You're going to do like an evaluation. Okay, so you're going to do an exit interview and see what's going on. Okay.
No, what we're trying to find out, but is will we offer them a package? That's what I'm saying.
That's, that's not why we're tabling it though.
No.
She wants to know why they retire. I'm sorry, not she, Mrs. Kane. I'm sorry.
So within that exit interview, you're going to also discuss with them, you know, if possible, hey, you know, you've been a great, you know, teacher here, you know, we, you know, value your service, blah, 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 you know. Would you think about rescinding, you know, your resignation? Are you going to offer that to them?
I have never said anything when you retire before.
Okay, but these, but what they're saying here is these are good teachers. So what would be the hesitancy of not asking, you know what I mean, even offering that to them? So I wouldn't, if you had the conversation with that individual, then yes, I guess that conversation would be off the table.
I made the motion. Oh, Sheila.
This is a roll call for the table.
Nicole left.
Mrs. Bible?
Sheila.
Mrs. Mason?
No.
Mrs. Price Jeans?
Yes.
Mrs. Cala Lala?
Uh, yes.
Mrs. Kane?
Yes.
Mrs. Durham Vanagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Gil?
Yes.
Mrs. Delo?
Yes.
All right. Recommendation to approve the resignation of Mrs. Debbie Engelman, business administrator slash board treasurer.
I'll move.
I second.
Any questions on the motion?
Yeah, do we have a timeline different than what we got last week? The time, you know, the June thirtieth, July first, whatever. What, what is?
Because she wanted. Whenever we decide, if you want to, if it is pretty much.
Yes. If I just do June sixteenth?
Well, that's.
They approve it.
Oh, okay.
So then we need to advocate.
What does her letter of resignation say? Is there a date specific? Yeah, but she's either an employee or she isn't. We need a specific date because then she also.
Because then she also has accumulated vacation days. And I don't know whether, under her contract, there's provisions for payment of accumulated sick days or not. We need a specific date.
She didn't have a date on her resignation?
It's open. Or it's open.
To table.
You can't say that because you don't know.
When's the, when's the budget gonna be adopted?
June sixteenth.
Make it June thirtieth, which is the end of the year. And if she wants something different than that, you can change it. You can do a new motion on the ninth.
Okay.
Yep, get her off dead center.
Recommendation to approve the resignation. This is a thing you would affect June thirtieth.
Now she'll have to read it with the date on it.
I thought he just did. I thought he just did.
You got that, Tina?
Mrs. Mason.
Yes.
Mrs. Price Jeans.
No.
Ms. Cala-Lala.
No.
Mrs. Kane.
No.
Mrs. Darren Flanagan.
What am I supposed to?
She'll accept her resignation. To accept my resignation.
So, you voted not to accept her resignation?
No.
Make a statement.
Ms. Gill.
No.
Mrs. Bible.
No.
Mr. Low.
I'm confused. What are we voting on now? To let her resign or to keep her? So, so what is the no for?
Cause I don't wanna do it.
Oh, you don't wanna do, yes.
So, what's that mean?
She'll be retired. She'll be leaving on June whatever her date is.
Okay.
Right. The purpose of the acceptance of the resignation is to make it clear on the school district minutes of when somebody left or was off.
Okay. What did you say was six to three? Three to six, sorry, three to six. Okay, were you ready for building the grounds? Okay. Recommendation to approve WPPC to use a classroom in the junior senior high school, June twenty-first through August twelfth, twenty twenty, Monday through Thursday, for their summer program from nine AM to one PM.
Second.
Questions on motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Recommendation to approve a contract with Green Elevator Inspection Company at the following costs. Twenty twenty-one, a hundred and fifty dollars. Twenty twenty-two, five hundred and twenty-five dollars. And twenty twenty-three, three hundred and seventy-five dollars.
I move.
Second.
Any questions on the motion?
Is this, I'm sorry. Is this just for them to come and inspect the elevators in both buildings?
Yes.
Which I assume they did already this year.
They come in yet? No. Yeah, they, they were in, in March to do inspections. They come, there's varying, various inspections. Couple of them they do twice a year. There's also different, like, weight tests that they do on the elevators. And that's why the price varies year to year slightly. But they're still rather minimal. And that's for three elevators total that they test and inspect.
Okay.
Ms. Cala-Lala.
Yes.
Mrs. Kane.
Yes.
Mrs. Darren Flanagan.
Yes.
Ms. Gill.
Yes.
Mrs. Bible.
Yes.
Mrs. Mason.
Yes.
Mr. Low.
Yes.
Recommendation to approve constructing a community garden on the elementary school property. All costs are paid through Penn State Extension and a farm to school grant.
I'll move.
I'll second. No, but I just, I went over, I, cause I went over, I snuck over when they were over there discussing it. So, they shifted it. So, if you all know where the old kindergarten wing is.
Yes.
And there used to be doors there, and now it's all windows. They're gonna put it right in, in the front. So, you'll be able to see it from kinda like the Aldi view and then the Twenty-First Street view. So, it'll be at the old main entrance in the front of the building. Like where you drop.
Where you pull up at, is, is the stair, stair right there? In that corner, fast there.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's gonna be really nice.
Okay. Yeah, that's a nice place for it. You happy?
I am.
All in fa, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So, there is nothing to be formal projects and policy, anything to report?
Did we, uh, did we hear anything back from the contractor?
Good evening. Uh, my name is Stephanie Eldridge. I'm actually alumni, alum from Alquippa School District. I graduated about thirty years ago to this day. Um, I wanted to stop in just because, you know, I went to Alquippa. I care about the community. I care about the kids. I also do a lot of work within, um, the state that I work in, Delaware, that I live in now. Um, I do a lot of work in Maryland and a lot of work in Pennsylvania. So, I own a company. It's called Code Differently. And what we do is focus on increasing diversity in technology. Right? So, the whole premise is that, um, can I walk? All right. The whole premise is that we're, we're increasing diversity in technology. Right? So, uh, we do this by removing barriers. One of the things that I wanted, that I heard here were about barriers. Right? And I think you said that Alquippa is one oh one of one oh two.
Of one oh two. One oh two. So, a hundred and two, we're one oh one.
Meaning our room?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. That's hard to digest.
Isn't it?
Right? But what I saw, or what I witnessed, was not a collaborative work environment to me. I actually thought I was gonna come here and tell you all about Code Differently and tell you how I love recording to Alquippa and how I'm doing it in other states. And we're hiring people, we're getting people that were making fifteen to sixteen thousand dollars a year that's making eighty-five to a hundred thousand dollars a year, right? I wanted to bring that back to my hometown. But my thoughts kinda shifted a bit. Cause I get the opportunities of just several school district meetings. And the ones that I see are at the top are the ones that work collaboratively. And just to answer your question, cause I, I was thinking about this. I just went to a school board meeting in my hometown. And it was about summer school. And guess what the answer was?
No.
There's no summer school. They told us, if your kids didn't participate during the school year, there has to be some accountability from parents. And what are you more interested in? Your child learning the material or your child passing? Right? It shift the room, the thoughts of the room. You have people in my school district, which happens to be the number one school district in the, in the state. Right? That are deciding to reclass their kids, meaning hold them back purposely. So, they learn the material. Not so they can jam into the summer. Right? Now, I also work in a school district that is the lowest school district in the state. You know what they're doing? Offing summer school. Because they're trying to pass kids. The point is, the number one school district in the state chose to not have summer school. So, the kids, if the parents choose, their kids will repeat the school year. Right? It's a tough year. It's a tough year for everybody. It's a tough year. Some schools are not back this year. Alquippa is back. Right? My school, my kids went back to school within, um, beginning of February. They go Monday, Tuesday, off on Wednesday, go back Thursday, Friday. Right? A lot of the parents decided to keep them on. I think the, the point is, when we talk about a ranking, one oh one of one oh two, there's many factors. How many parents are here? Right? So, we gotta get to the point where a school district, the school board, and a school, it might suggest parents come in. Now, it's great to represent their voice, but they need to be involved and accountable, too. The other thing is, income impacts it. Volatirism, behavioral norms. So, when I said that, that was a fair assessment. It was because we were just asking the teachers, so what did you do next? What did you do next? What did you do next? And there's no parents in the room to say, what did you do next? Everybody's having a tough time. Parents are, teachers are parents, too.
That's right.
Right? They're dual-headed right now. And I can hear, I hear people, the first thing that people typically say is, well, what's up with the curriculum? The curriculum is the what? The big thing is the how. Okay? I can't say, I would say math has been the same since we were younger, but you know that new math is a little different. A little different. But the point is, it's still math. It's still science. The accountability has to be on the community to improve it. And, you know, this is my first, this is my mother's birthday, by the way. I live in Delaware. I grow here today and I said.
Tell her happy birthday.
I said, I wanna go to a school for me, cause I wanna be able to offer my help. So, here's the thing. I am the, the president and CEO of Code Differently. Um, we had, in the summertime, we had a hundred and fifty high school students that come and work for my company. We teach them how to do software development. The seniors this year are being hired by J.K. Morgan Chase as software developers. So, these are some kids that don't even have to go to college. They can if they want. Some of them do, they go on scholarship. But they are all kids that are at least two hundred percent of the population. Right? They're our kids. So, even though I live in the number one school district, I work primarily in the lowest school district. I'm not a teacher. I'm an engineer. I'm a software developer, and I own a software developer company. And I'm a. And, and I wanna, I wanna be able to help. But I think that help has to be a three sixty view of where we are. And if everyone's pointing, like, oh, did you do this? Did you do this? Do you? I tell my team all the time. I say, take away the who, and let's talk about the what now. Right? If you gotta bring something to the table and there's a name behind it, we're focusing on the wrong things. Right? I mean, I'm, I'm just saying, that's, that's like. And then the other thing is, I don't hear one time us celebrate any wins. The win is the kids are back in school. Nobody's celebrated a win. We talk about all losses. You gotta mitigate the losses, but you gotta celebrate the wins. You gotta talk about the good things you're doing, too. Or it's always gonna be, you know, this swirl in the room. And look, I ain't kinda preach to y'all, I swear to goodness. I just went off for a coding. But. But I care enough to talk about these things. So, here's what I'm gonna say. Whether you take me up on offer or not, I am more than willing to help in any advisory role. I know there's several of us that no longer live in Alquippa. Right? Uh, I went here, went to Morgan State, come back and forth to see my mother. My husband lived in Philly, or was from Philly. He settled in Delaware. But my heart is in Alquippa.
Thank you.
Okay? I am willing to do anything and everything, free of charge. You don't have to come in and vote on if we're gonna pay consulting fee to step in. Right? And I want you to take me up on it. Because schools where I live take me up on it.
Okay.
Right? I'm on advisory board in Texas. I'm going in Ohio. I'm going in Maryland. And I'm not on one of here. And I only know if one exists. But if it doesn't, it's time. It's time for it. There's an opportunity now. And we all know the CARES Act, the stimulus funds. And if you don't know, you should know. That there is funding out there for the people. People like people from Alquippa. And it's an opportunity to take those funds and come up with some creative programming for parents, for administrators, for the board, for the community, for everyone. But I will say, it takes a village, and it truly means a village. Not saying it takes a village and, hey, teachers, what are you doing? Cause have, have, have any of y'all done a sit with yet? Like, actually go sit in a classroom when teachers teach?
Oh, yeah.
Let me tell you. Well, let me tell you something. If you haven't, a one to twenty ratio, which I heard someone said they got one. And this time, it's very different than a one to twenty when we grew up. And teachers have a way bigger job than they did when we grew up.
Yes.
They're that counselor. They're the parent. They're, they're everything.
Everything.
And when you say, why did they retire? I was like, why, they, why wouldn't they? I'm gonna be honest, right? I go to the schools every day. And it's like, you know, there's a lot.
Mrs. Eldridge, I don't wanna interrupt you. But they also have blended classrooms that we did not have growing up. Which makes that. Our special ed children have to be included in the regular classroom. When we were kids growing up, they had separate classrooms. So, now you have teachers that have to deal with all different levels. And I will say this. Not as a board member have I sat in a classroom. But when my oldest child was in high school, he got in trouble and I came in to embarrass him and sat through all of his classes. I give our teachers here so much credit and respect. Because they deal with so much in their classroom. And me coming into this high school and sitting through every one of my son's classes. Those teachers do the best they can to get through to whatever kid is sitting there focused on them with all the chaos going on around them.
Yeah, right.
And they pray that those few kids, they're reaching.
Right, absolutely. I mean, look, I'll end this with saying again, I offer my help. I believe in the kids. I believe in the parents. I believe in the administrators. I believe in the board. Right? I believe in the teachers. I believe in us being able to work together. I've seen some miraculous things come together when we all talk about coaching. Everybody talk about coaching, right? Running behind football. It's kind of running with, um, around education.
That's right.
Thank you.
Mrs. Eldridge, before you sit down.
Uh, what, what we were doing is that we very seldom have teachers that are me. So, the question that was bombarded today is the questions we finally see the teachers. Because, you know, they report that we're not open to the, we are. But if you come and we can discuss things, and then we know without the rumor mill, then everything is okay. You know, but what I'm saying, I just don't want no child, not to say be left behind, but no child, not, no, we talking about K three, about reading. We got four, five, six that's slow in reading, too. So, I mean, I, that's all.
About four, five, six didn't happen this year. That's not, that's not happened over time.
Exactly. Exactly.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, this, I, I get the, I, I have all of the students that come through our program are high schoolers, right? Um, but I do understand having the foundation. And when, like, the ones that come to even wanna work with us in high school, if they can't read, they can't get employed for many of the job opportunities. Definitely not skilled.
So, I wanna speak to you why you came here. In regards to not this, but the reason you came here to see us. Because my background's your background. And I get completely where you're coming from. And one of the things that they did hit on is these early reading skills for these kids.
Yep.
And working with computers and understanding programming. If you do not understand and comprehend logic and analytics and learning how to read and comprehend what you're seeing, which all starts with reading, they're not gonna be able to. You're not gonna be able to comprehend and move forward and do mathematics. You're not gonna be able to do that science work that all builds into that. But what you're coming, I wanna hear your information. I wanna hear your information, one, because I do understand as an IT professional that we lack African Americans working in that field.
Absolutely.
And we need.
Lowest representation.
And the other thing, being here in Alquippa is understanding these communities around Pittsburgh that were still male towns. The way they're rebuilding is by bringing in technology. Alquippa can do that, but we need to have the education. And we need to set our kids up to take those jobs and be able to build that community.
The tech world calls Pittsburgh the Silicon Valley of the East, right? You got every tech, large tech Silicon Valley company that's in California is now in Pittsburgh. Right? I mean, the opportunities are there. We do have to get our kids to believe that they can do it. That's one of the things like exactly. Look, I, I retired early from J.K. Morgan Chase as a technology executive, right? And there was only two people that looked like me there. Now, as a, as an executive director in Delaware, there's ten thousand employees, two, two black females, right? Of fifty thousand person technology organizations, there were eight black technologists that were executive directors.
And that's an accomplishment, not just.
Because I grew up in.
That's an accomplishment, not just as an African American, but an African American woman. Because there are very few African American women. And one thing that I wanna say is I really commend you. And our girls that are in this community need to see you. You're the type of person they need to see.
I do, I do need to say that Ms. Alexander and Ms. Shepherd and Mrs. Smith, we have all had conversations along with Mrs. James. We, we all had conversations about recent programming here. And there has been strong interest, right? And, and I have a team, I have a grant writers and everything. I'm, I'm willing to offer them up too to make it happen. We just need to talk about how to make it happen. And we have to talk about the kids actually participating. Because I opened up last year, gave ten free slots to Alquippa. We had three kids sign up. And she sent it out to every single kid, every household. We had three kids sign up and one finished. Right? So again, we're talking about opportunities being put in front. Now, me, I'm willing to come back, but other people that have grants, they're not willing to come back. Because you gotta report those results of those grants in order to get another grant one. So we gotta figure out how to position, you know, some change within our community, a three sixty view.
That's also something that we need to look at internally at our curriculum. It's because our kids need to be introduced to some of this stuff. And we have, we have to do better.
Things like mine that can come in and not charge the school district a penny.
But some of these kids, and I'm gonna say this only from my own experience, I was an art major. I did a complete one eighty and switched over to technology.
So my son, um.
Some kids may not know that it's something they may take interesting.
But I think it's something that we can, we make it interesting. They, they, you know, when they code, they, they build football games and basketball games. So we make it geared towards them. And all by the way, so the hundred and fifty kids that's in my program in the summer, they're all paid ten dollars and cents in an hour. They're paid a wage to participate. So if you don't come, you don't get paid. So they show up.
That's right.
And that's all funded through like the primary labor grants, CARES Act grants and everything else, right? It's just knowing how to do it.
How old, how old do they start? How old do your?
That actually work, they have to be fourteen because you gotta have work papers. I need work remotely. We forgot on the computer. They have it in Net Service. We give them everything they need to participate. Now, this summer would be too late. So I know you, see you talk about, we need to talk about this last week. We need, we need to talk about a whole year to get to next summer, okay? It's too late right now. But, um, it's not too late to start planning.
Right.
Right? And, and the same offer for the parents. Just like I have high school students actually having work here. They have three hundred parents that come through in Delaware, allowing them to come through our program as an apprentice program. We are the first IT apprentice company in Delaware. And we're going through approval from Pennsylvania now. So we do take parents too, same deal.
That's wonderful.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Steph. Good job. Good speaking to you.
I'm mad about Stephanie. And this, this goes back here. Her support for our children, it did not just start with Code Differently. It started way back when I was in the classroom. Every year, Stephanie would reach out, what do your kids need? I'm putting a check in the mail for you to find that stuff for them. So she has helped from way back then. She's supported the Quip Bar. She's come home to talk to them, to help them with their competition. She, her, her, she walks the walk and she talks the talk. So this is not just lip service. She actually is one who does for our kids behind the scenes. She does not like the recognition board. So this is genuine.
Yeah, now she can tell everybody though. I get a little freaked out. I still am an engineer, right? Being over here, so.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, yeah.
Thank you. Oh, hold on a second. Cause I think I do this every meeting. Community engagement. Community. Okay. I don't know why we keep forgetting about it on here because it's supposed to be part of our board. But as she was saying, as she was saying, we need more input, yes, from the parents. We need more input also what the teacher expects. We need more in, input from the community as to where they can, and how they can help us. Now, I ask us every week, and, um, I ask teachers to be a part of, administrate. Anyone that's involved, anybody in the community, get involved with our community engagement. It's gonna be, um, set up after I get some good directions. But, um, we need to set it up because of Black, we need to stay in contact with our teachers. Because right now, we only talk to our teachers when we hear something and it's negative. We want teachers who wanna come every time we have a meeting so they can give us some input on what's going on in their classroom and what they need to have changed for their classroom. So give them the engagement.
As a parent, every single time you try to get parents involved, you're gonna get five or ten of the same changes.
And they're gonna stop though.
Ever more than just a handful. So you can't, the ones that are the handful of parents that do for their kids, their kids are doing what they're supposed to do. But the ones that are out of control, you don't have no parent involvement. So that's the place everybody's got harder. So I don't, I don't know if we gotta love on the kids harder, but something needs to be done at home. I think everything starts at home.
Exactly. That's what we need to, it may be some issues at home that we could, um, help out with the parents that they may be going through. But we can't, you know, closed mouths don't get faith.
And that's the problem.
So we can't, yeah, we can't, we can't give up. I mean, we can't give up. We gotta keep on, keep on, and keep on. If we get five parents, that's a start.
A prime example of what she's talking about. Like I'll hear the phone call and, and they'll, they'll give me a story like trying to change their kids. But we need Cooper Residency to do that. And you know, I sit there and listen. And I'll, I'll say, I'm just gonna ask you one question. You don't need to give me any details. Happy many day there. I said, because if you tell me that, it removes everything else that we just discussed. And I can put some things in place maybe. But there's that, that, and I get that because you don't want anybody to know that you're not capable of or you're not able. So we have to create a forum where that's okay. They hear that, you know, we're mandated reporting. They hear that we're gonna call CYS and we're gonna do that. But most of the time when I say that, they'll be like, Ms. Shepherd, thank you so much. Like I don't need Cooper Residency if you just tell me that you don't have anywhere to live right now. That change could be made with a matter of a phone call. But we have to remove the stigma and, and be willing to help without the criticism or the derelict eyes or anything like that.
What else I wanted to say? Can we be on it? Can we be on it? Community engagement, please.
Motion to adjourn?
I move.
Second.